City Attorney, we're all present during the taking of session. No decision to be made. Okay, proceeding on to public comments.
Oh, excuse me.
Approval of minutes from December 14th, 2015, and the special meeting we had on December 22nd, 2015. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from December 14th and the special meeting in December 22nd.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Public comments. Anybody out there that's not on the agenda, step up at the podiums, please state your name, your ward.
Marvin K. Turner, Ward 2, 1110 Jenkins. I was here at the meeting, 22nd. I had some questions, but I was, we weren't allowed to answer them. I understood that you approved this geometric thing between 17th and 20th, but I still have a little trouble wrapping my head around some of this stuff. Now, I asked one of my council people about whose idea that this was in 2013, and he wasn't able to answer it, but I guess that really doesn't matter. One of the questions I had Mr. Shane answered about the reduced grade east of 20th Street, I'm not sure whether it's nine inches or nine feet. Nobody ever really told me anyways.
It's about nine inches.
Nine inches?
Roughly.
Okay.
They have to maintain a certain thickness on the pavement. They would've gone more, but there wasn't, they couldn't maintain enough pavement, so it was, it was, the drop in grade was limited by how much pavement thickness they had to maintain. So it's roughly nine, nine to 12 inches.
My memory is kind of limited, but as I recall, your answer was the DOT wanted it reduced so that we could see a truck coming up the hill.
No, that was, that was one of the, that was one of the, the pieces of the proposal, was to increase the sight distance through cutting it down. It was hoped that when we submitted that application, we could go farther, go deeper, but when they got into design, because of the pavement thickness, they had to stay, it was going to limit it to about nine inches. Yeah, if you're sitting in a pickup truck, you can see, but if you're sitting in a small car, it's harder to see farther down that hill.
I don't have a Corvette, but let's, who is it that we're reducing this far? Is that for a vehicle at 20th Street pointing south? Or one coming out of Landall Lanes, or coming out of Hardee's?
Well, nobody in particular, but it's, it's for sight distance, yeah. I suppose those people turning against the traffic going east would be more beneficial to them than somebody turning west, yes. But somebody turning west needs to see traffic coming up too, so it benefits both east and west on traffic.
Okay, if I'm sitting in a Corvette at 20th Street and gonna turn left to go to Orson's or Walmart or wherever, I need, I need that visibility? If I've got a green light...
I don't know, I don't know what you need. I don't know what visibility you need.
Well, if I have a traffic light there, and I have a green light to go, why would I need to worry about a truck coming up the hill anyway unless he's gonna run a red light?
Well, that's part of the project.
Yeah, it's all part of the project. I mean, in one piece, it's hard to pull out why one piece is more beneficial than another. The light is there, frankly, KDOT had recommended that if a geometric improvement project was done on that section, that a stoplight be installed at 20th.
Like I say, I don't think I understand if I'm sitting there and I get a green light on 20th Street, why I need to worry about a truck coming up the hill. I hope they stop the red light instead of T-bone at 45, 50 mile an hour.
Certainly hope so.
And right now, that's probably gonna happen if you don't get KDOT to move it to 30, 100 yards east or someplace. I've turned right at 20th Street quite a few times, and my old pickups will get up to 30 fairly fast. It is a V8, but it's no time at all, and I've got somebody on my rear bumper.
I think one of the things that they may require us to do, right now, our maintenance stops at 20th. We are not responsible for maintenance east of 20th, therefore, we're not responsible for the speed limit. But I think one of the things that they indicated when we were reviewing the project with them years ago, was that would we be agreeable to extending the maintenance agreement to the edge of this project? And I believe our answer to them was, I think we'll consider that. So if we take the maintenance, then the speed limit, I think, comes along with that, and then we, hopefully, will be able to get that 30 miles back down over the hill at the end of that project, which is roughly, that drive there behind the motel is, is about the project limits. Center line, center line of that driveway going into Jason's place is, is the end of the project.
Well, probably 100 yards is maybe get them down to where they're down to 30 mile an hour when they go through that intersection.
Well, I hope so.
Other thing was drainage was mentioned, and I went up, we had four and a half inches on Saturday and Sunday, a couple weeks ago. I went up there on Monday morning about 11 o'clock expecting to find a big puddle. There were no puddles there. The water went somewhere, I don't know where it went. It's too cold for it to evaporate that fast, so why do you, why do you need to improve drainage?
Some of it's going in the ditch, but a lot of it sits there at the old shortstop entrance, and puddles there, and it's still there.
Well, I went west, and there were a couple little puddles.
Well, there's no little puddle, well, it's not in the highway, no, but it's on that entrance, but that's all gonna be done.
Well, when Casey's redoes the curb along there, I'm sure they'll have a couple entrances there.
Well, Casey's is not gonna redo the curb. That will be done as part of this project. Casey's will, is supposed to reimburse us for their entrance, but everything is gonna be underground up there. No more surface drains. Everything is designed, there'll be some additional catch basins added, one at the corner of 20th and Center Street, there in front of Pony Express, at the corner of Pony Express, and I think there's a couple others that are designed on there. Some of them are being upgraded.
In other words...
There's additional storm drainage there where the, where the bank used to be.
We're gonna spend $100,000 to get rid of a couple puddles. Okay. Darlene mentioned turns, turn lanes. There's enough room there to have turn lanes. Now, eastbound, you have a turn lane for 20th Street. East of that, you have a turn lane into Hardee's. Coming westbound, you have a turn lane into Landall Lanes. So I know there's enough room to have turn lanes. Now, yellow paint's a whole lot cheaper than taking two feet of curb out and adding to it.
It's all part of the project.
The state, we don't have any control, that's a state highway. We don't, we have to go by their rules. We can't make up rules about how the lanes are divided.
Well, if KDOT could put in turn lanes for Hardee's coming westbound, or no, Hardee's going eastbound 20th Street, and Landall Lanes coming westbound, why can't they put in turn lanes for the new Casey's, and 18th Street, and 17th Street, and Sonic? Yellow paint's a whole lot cheaper than what you're talking, spending.
The road narrows there at Sonic, yeah.
Yeah, the road's two feet narrower, probably, thereabouts at Sonic. The curb actually comes out further there. The curb is not at a consistent distance from the center line on the north side.
Now, there's enough room for turn lanes, 'cause I've been behind people...
Not at Sonic.
Right at Sonic, if we're gonna turn at 18th Street, which is right across from Sonic, I've eyeballed it, I've been up there.
I've seen three or four cars hit that north curb. I mean, there's technically room, if that person who's turning is right on the yellow, boy, you better be a good driver, you're gonna lose a mirror. I mean, it's that close, it's really close. It's possible.
Okay, and Todd alluded to the rush hour traffic up there at 20th Street, which I guess I never hit the rush hour traffic. But if we've got a problem with rush hour traffic until you get this thing done, maybe you need to have the police come up and get traffic through there so people can go. But anybody with common sense is not gonna sit behind three or four vehicles at 20th with the left turn signal's on, and they can go over to 18th, 17th, 15th, or 14th and get out on the highway.
I agree, but, but 20th is a thoroughfare, and some of those streets aren't. Plus, you know the people who live on those streets aren't gonna be very happy if we're directing people to go there. And a lot of people do try to go over to 11th Road, but that's a whole nother can of safety worms.
Well, I live on, I live on 12th Street, and we've got plenty of traffic on 12th Street. And I'm tempted sometimes to go out there and make a speed bump in front of my place to slow some of these people down. In fact, it gets so bad sometimes, I park, I park the pickup out along, or south along my driveway, so that when the wife's mowing the lawn, east and west, she doesn't get run over by some of these people. Where they're going in such a big hurry beats me. It's not, not that big a town. But like I say, I understand you've already passed this, so I mean, I guess getting my head around it, whether DOT approves it or not, this, this is a thing that, you know, people on fixed incomes in this town, there's a lot of them, a lot of them don't even know what's going on with this. I've talked to a lot of people, and they say, "What? They're gonna do what?" I said, "Okay." Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you, Marvin.
Anybody else in the audience? This time we'll have Swab Eaton on the floodplain.
Thank you, everybody. My name is Brad Fagan, and I brought Keith and Meyer along with me. Just to kind of give you a background, history of this project, this project, I'm sure you're aware of. FEMA went through to redo these floodplain maps, and the consultant that was hired to act on FEMA's behalf, did an approximate study of this tributary to Spring Creek that we're here to talk about. I think the Division of Water Resources, who's FEMA's representative also in this particular instance, they all recognized that there was never enough hours budgeted to do a full in-depth analysis of this tributary. And so there was a lot of assumptions that were made that ended up putting the boundaries, as they were, I mean, I think you guys all have the handout that we had sent up here last week, and then again, we tweaked that again. But the, whatever, purple, buyer behind whatever it is, that was the original proposed floodplain, and then, you know, we had some people from the tech park that were concerned about being in the industrial park, that were concerned about being in the floodplain. So they, we had done some other studies where same thing had happened, where the floodplains were so wide, and, you know, that there was concerns about whether they were done correctly or not, and we'd gotten involved in some of those things, and it was one of these things that was kind of like a no-brainer appeal. I mean, we went through, we got the computer information model, modeling for the computer that was done, and we went through, and, you know, you could just look at, you can go through these models, and you can look at things, and there'll be things that'll just stand out that you can appeal to FEMA or whatnot, and they'll agree, and we've just been involved in some projects where we've had some successful appeals. So we had some of the folks from the industrial park contact us, and we did a initial review of the computer modeling input, and we had some discussions with Division of Water Resources, and we came back and we told them that, you know, we really, yes, we have reason to believe that the floodplain model is, is way bigger than what it should be, it shouldn't be that high, there's various things that we think that you can do that would be able to reduce the floodplain imprint. And so, you know, then we, I think, then they got with the city, and we entered into agreement with the city to go ahead and do this analysis, and look at various factors, and so that's where we're at now. We've done the hydrology and hydraulic studies, we've come up with some various different boundaries from the different things that we've looked at. And, you know, before you get to the point where you might want to make a decision to make, go ahead and make the appeal, we're gonna present, we're presenting our findings to you right now. One of the things that, the, and I, and this is just, like I said, Olson Associates was the consultant that acted in FEMA's behalf to do this. And like I said, it was an approximate study, you know, they didn't have the money to go through and look at things, so I'm not saying anything to, you know, throw them under the bus or anything like that. I mean, this is just the way it is. But there were, one of the things that they did come back with, was after they presented their initial study to FEMA, there was like seven or nine cross-sections.
Nine.
Nine cross-sections that they did not have in their original input model, that needed, and it had already been presented, and they ended up, we had some discussions with those guys. They sent us the cross-sections, and we input that into the model, and just by doing that, that reduced that purple line down to the yellow line, just by adding the cross-sections. It showed more of a conveyance through the tributary than what was originally modeled. And so, and also, one of the things that they, everybody recognized, was that the storage capacity of the pond north of 36 at the golf course, that the, that storage aspect was not utilized enough, or it wasn't even taken into account. And so we went through, and we did some modeling on that, and it came up with like a, there was about a 15% reduction in the actual stream flow, and I think that's also on the handouts that you had, what it was originally, and what it dropped to. And so, that was taken into account, the, oh, the biggest, actually, the biggest thing that we came up with, which I was explaining a little bit earlier, was trying to do this so everyone understands. But whenever you do a hydraulic analysis, you work downs, you start downstream and work your way back up, and you, you're supposed to start at a water surface elevation, and, I mean, eventually, if you start far enough downstream, the energy equation will work its way back to where it's supposed to be. I mean, it may take a while to get upstream, but the thing is, there was a confluence with Spring Creek about, whatever, 1,000 foot downstream from the area of concern here. And so you have to start out with a water surface elevation that's consistent with tying into Spring Creek. Well, the thing is, the, when this model was first done, they assumed that the starting water surface elevation for the tributary tying into Spring Creek was at the 100-year water surface elevation of Spring Creek. And like what I was explaining earlier, you know, then they ran their 100-year flood for Spring, for the tributary. The drainage area for the tributary is two square miles. The drainage area for the Spring Creek is 60 square miles. So it's like, yeah, it makes sense if you have two drainage areas, two small drainage areas that are a similar size, that they might both be having a 100-year rainfall event, storm event. But if you have like a concentrated cell over this two-square-mile area, that does not mean that you're gonna also be having the 100-year storm on Spring Creek. And there are statistics that you can go through to kind of say what would be appropriate for the Spring Creek drainage area that's tying into the tributary. And that was the big thing, and we went back through, and, you know, Keith is the one that actually has done the bulk of the work on this project, and then me and another guy have overseen that, and I promised Keith that I wouldn't throw him to the wolves. But, so anytime that we, any detailed questions, I'm probably gonna have to go to Keith. But that was, Keith had some more, there's a guy with Olson Associates that we've been getting information back and forth from, and, and we, I had, had some correspondence with Rick today, and we talked about just how this whole appeal process might work. Dane Bailey is the guy that both Rick and I, Keith and have all been talking with. He's with the Division of Water Resources, and the question was raised about whether he would be the one that would be reviewing this, or how, you know, can he just take the information that we presented and, and approve the appeal just as it is, or how is that gonna be done? Actually, Olson Associates is gonna be the reviewer of this. And so, we talked to Dane about this today, and he refused, referred us to talk to Chad at Olson Associates. Keith was the one that actually talked to him, and went through a lot of this stuff as far as would Chad, you know, not having seen any of the detailed analysis, but as far as our assumptions and everything to this point, was he, was it all acceptable to him? And as it was, the only question was, there's various flows that you can use at, for Spring Creek, and we put some literature in their handouts as, as far as our justifications for Spring Creek, where we tied into that at the tributary. We assumed a normal flow of Spring Creek, and we boxed that in and read that, that literature that we think justifies using the normal flow of Spring Creek while we're looking at a 100-year storm of the tributary. Chad, I think in the end, was leaning towards that was, would be acceptable, but he also had some other spreadsheets where he was thinking about maybe we should be looking at a two-year storm. Regardless, that does have a significant impact on the boundary, and it will lower it significantly. There was also some stuff with, oh, the conveyance, there was some spots, trying to explain this the best way I can. If you're going down a stream and it has banks like this, and it's going straight downstream, I mean, that's your cross-section. I mean, that's where the water's flowing. When you're doing that hydraulic analysis, there'll be places where your bank will bow out, or something, or something like that. I mean, if there's another stream coming in, or whatever. But anyway, that water over there, when you're doing your analysis, if you were to take a cross-section through there, your conveyance area would be shown to be this big compared to like this big. Well, what you do is you have what we call ineffective flow areas, and this modeling is as much of a science as, an art as a science. And so, that water is considered to not really be flowing, it's more just backwater that's there. And so, when we go through our cross-sections for modeling, we'll artificially block out that area, that it's not, so, and you can kind of, I mean, you do these modeling, and everybody will pretty much see these areas. And so, that was one of the things that we did, was we went through, and actually, we, there were some places that we thought really, there should have been some ineffective flow, some areas blocked out, and what that does was, it raises the water surface elevation. But also, we saw some places where Olson had some areas blocked out as being ineffective, that on closer look, we didn't think it was justified. And that was another thing that Keith talked to Chad about, and I think that that was another, I think that is acceptable to them. But that, that was, basically, that was the things, adding those cross-sections, reducing the hydrology, the actual flow, by taking into account the storage of the golf, the pond at the golf course, that reduced it by 15%. Adding these, or taking out the ineffective flow areas, and then also the, especially the starting water surface elevation that the, that we started our analysis at, especially that had a huge impact on dropping the floodplain bound, boundary down to the blue, blue line now. And so, we're thinking that's about as good as we can do to get the floodplain boundary brought in as much as possible. So, and then now, I guess with that, I mean, we're open to taking any questions that you might have, but I guess now it's to the point where you want to go ahead and send them the appeal, and that's the, there are some certain criteria that FEMA requires as far as putting the appeal together, and so, I, we feel pretty comfortable with having talked to Chad, and Dane, and all, from all the work that we've done in our past experiences, that we feel pretty comfortable that if it isn't gonna be this blue line, it's probably gonna be pretty, something pretty close to it.
So Brad, is, I guess what, that's our courts of action now, is, this automatically doesn't, in other words, FEMA doesn't automatically accept this?
No, they have to have their own reviewers go through.
So basically, we're gonna have to go into Phase 3 of that agreement and go ahead and do with the appeal.
Right.
Even if we go into the appeal, from what I'm looking at, this doesn't get all of our business out of the floodplain anyway.
It gets the buildings out.
Yeah.
It gets the buildings out.
There's like a parking lot.
No, you, you need to look at the one in front of you. That's the old one.
That's the old one.
You need to look at the one on the table. Just pick up the one on the table. It's on the back page, the blue line. It does hit trucks plus property, and it hits whir, but I, I believe, as I can tell, the buildings are out.
The buildings are out.
The main buildings are out.
Okay, if they accept this, if we win this appeal, then can we leave this park as it is, or do we still have to put some levies or something in effect?
No. No.
Just as long as nothing is built in, in the, in the blue area.
Right.
Right, right in here?
Right.
Now, could they possibly build in that if they wanted to do flood insurance or go that way, Brad?
Yeah.
Or elevate, or elevated at some point to...
Uh, you know, a lot of that area is also, you know, for parking lots, or, I mean, a lot, a lot of towns use, will use this area for athletic facilities, soccer fields or something like that.
Right.
If, I don't know that anybody can build in there and raise the...
Put two-foot fill-in or something like that for sagging building?
Yeah, I don't think they'll allow that. They'll look at that as backing up water.
Since the owners of the business park were the ones to raise the issue in the first place, have they, we shared this with them, or is we just haven't?
Rick's out there.
Okay, all right.
Can't help but share with Tim.
Yeah.
I've forwarded, not this new map, the other map that I got, I've forwarded to the rest of the parks and industrial parks, so, Rick's any guy is.
Are you comfortable with this?
Say this is the line.
Rick, could you come up to the podium, please? Thank you.
Say this is the line. Hi, Brad. Uh, one says established, that's set in stone, basically. In other words, this here, this 1160, this here was what was considered 500-year floodline, right here.
Well, that's just a contour. That's all that is. It's what I was, and maybe it's just maybe by showing that, but like, each of these water surface elevations, like right here, 1159.93, where that hits, which is just below the 1160 contour, where it crosses that 1159.93, when that's where the floodplain boundary is. And then this 1160.83, it would be, you know, about a foot above the 1160 contour, so where that crosses, you know, that's... You know, that's how that follows the boundary.
Can I ask how? The water, like, am I understanding incorrect? The water level here is at 1159 elevation?
Yeah.
And here, the water level's at 1164. Can I ask how that can be there?
Well, this is, it's going upstream. And so, it's more upstream.
That's considering backup, right?
That's what I thought, too. It's backup water.
Well, my question is, because to me, that's more higher here than it is here.
That's what Rick's trying to make. The water's up to here. It's going to be the way.
Oh, it's just, the water is just, it's going upstream. Well, and.
Look, this is not a wide, so.
The water is level, you know, as it's going downstream, it's level perpendicular to how it's going downstream. But as it goes upstream, the water surface is always increasing. And that was what we talked about, some discussions that we had within, as we do the analysis, was, we looked at the way these cross-sections were laid in by Olson when they had done this. And that was one of the things we had talked about was, we had some differences of opinions, but at the same time, you get to, there were certain things, as we went through this whole study, that it's like, one engineer can have an opinion about something, and another engineer can have an opinion about something else. And when you're, and when it's like tit for tat, or it's like, somebody has a good reason for doing something, and it's like, if we could not, if we could not have a definite reason for why this needs to be changed, then we just left it. And so, these are the cross-sections that Olson had originally used for their model. You know, somebody's going to, there are going to be slight changes by whoever does this, so we just went with what they had.
That's my question. I did kind of understand that it's more, more higher here than here.
I mean, a lot of times, you're looking out better. But it's, I agree, it's just, it looks old, because land's going to be, but if you shoot it, the surveyors have gone out there and talked this thing. It goes down as well.
That's where the water's at as it's moving. So Brad, and basically, you know, because I, I think sometimes I look at this as like, we see this as, okay, well, if the water's standing down there, how can it be four foot higher in one spot? No, but, but so, but this assumes the water's constantly moving, so this is the boundaries of the water as it moves downstream. Is that correct?
Right.
That's why you've got these different, that's why it can look like it's four foot higher in one spot than it is, which it would be if it was all standing still, but, but this is all based on moving water.
Right. Yeah. If there was, if there was water that was backed up from Spring Creek, you know, what, oh, if, for a diagram, when you're doing these hydraulic analysis, you know, they might show a diagram where water from a tributary is coming into a stream down here, and it might typically flow down like this, but if this stream is really high, that water, at that particular elevation, that cross-section, it goes straight across, and so this water will come down, and it'll just start pooling there, and it'll maybe raise or go. But, so there, there are some places where there's some backup that looks.
It looks flat.
Brad's question was, are they, are we going to get some assistance here from the, from the businesses in the industrial park? Did we get an answer to that?
Well, my question was, were they satisfied with this? Do they feel comfortable that their businesses are?
Safe.
Safe. Yeah, thank you.
Tension does, but I mean, tension's taken completely out of it by this.
You know, your business is the one that we've, you know, we got to do what will be approved by FEMA. And I mean, that was one. And it was before we sent, you know, we looked at this stuff again, and this is, you know, the last handout that we sent last week, it was just, your building was just barely around there. A lot of times, what'll happen is, you'll have to get a LOMER or LOMA, a letter of map amendment or revision, and just have some surveyors go out and shoot the elevations. Because at this, at this scale and the way these models are done, it's hard to get the detail for actual building elevations. I mean, this, the contours that we used all through this was provided by LIDAR, and so, those in itself are a little bit off, rough, but, I mean, they're fairly close. And, but, with the latest one, where the last thing we did was, we thought there were some ineffective flow areas that shouldn't have been there in the original model, and when we opened that up, we feel pretty comfortable that this would be sufficient to shoot you completely out.
So, my question about the ineffective water, you said it's kind of an art form. How much, means, the one thing you, that you felt like they were blocking off, and you guys had, how much of that is it pretty obvious? Did you guys go and look at those, physically look at those spots and say, oh, yeah, there's going to be a problem there? Or did you just look at the cross-sections of the LIDAR and you looked at that?
We looked at the cross-sections and just the contours, and basically, the cross-sections all through there, you've got the top of bank, and then it, there's kind of some overbanker is, it's a little bit lower, and that is pretty much consistent all the way down the stream. And once the water gets out there, like it will flow. Do that all the way down, that's basically what we were changing.
Now, so, so if Chad at Olson, or whoever does the review, doesn't agree with, they still think that that's ineffective water there in places of water, well, how will that be resolved? I mean, will somebody go there and physically take a look and say, oh yeah, this is the water running back up here?
Well, I think, I talked to him today about it, and he, I kind of explained what we were thinking, when we took that out and just tried to increase it a little. One of the things, when they did that model, they were looking at like two-year, five-year, 10-year, a bunch of different flows, and for some of them lower flows, that area wouldn't actually flow and wouldn't get water in it. But for the 100-year flow, which is what we were focusing on, there's places upstream where it could spread out and get into there, and then once it's out there, it's going to flow in there all the way down. And so, I just kind of walked him through that. He seemed to be very clear with that, and understand where we're coming from, and thought this was reasonable. So I'm going to talk to him about that, but.
Yes, I'm very comfortable that he's going to be the one to do it.
From what we've heard so far, yeah. Have some sense he'll be.
No, and like I said, we, when we went through this whole process, we didn't change anything if we thought it was just going to be a, he said she said thing, where there's going to be an argument. We didn't, unless we felt like it was blatantly obvious, we didn't have to. So, that's where we're pretty comfortable. There's always the possibility that somebody may disagree, but.
According to this, according to this, none of the buildings in the industrial park fall into what you say is the floodplain, correct? And what the business owner's concerned was, that there are flood insurance, they would have to have it, and it'd go sky high. Well, now, none of them are in that floodplain, and if we win the appeal, they're, this stands, right? This stands as the map. As it is now, the areas down in here are being used as like a pumpkin patch, or, or something. They can still use it, if their parking car's there, they can still use it. The only thing this does is, they don't have to pay flood insurance because they're on a floodplain.
That's exactly right.
Okay, then we need to appeal.
I think, I think your motion would be one, if you recall on contract, at this point in time, it would need to be in a motion to approve Phase 3 of the contract, because I believe, Brad, council had to act on Phase 3 separately. So your motion would be to approve Phase 3 of the contract and proceed with the appeal.
What was, do we need to talk about the cost?
Well, it's all, basically, it was a one cause.
Okay. Okay, move to approve Phase 3 of the contract.
I have a motion to approve Phase 3 of the contract.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those? That will carry. Brad, Keegan, thank you for your time on this project.
Thank you.
I know it's probably a lot of stress for you, Keegan, trying to get it all done, but we're going to forward on the appeal and hope that we have good, good things coming back to us. Thank you.
What's our next step, and what's the timeframe?
Oh, good question.
Brad, what will be our timeframe on the appeal?
I think it was all supposed to be in February 16th, I think. So, a little reminder, but even when we had started this, Dane Bailey, who, you know, we kept in the loop, we sent him this handout, he said, as long as he knew that things were progressing along, that, you know, he was going to be flexible with this and get it to work. But I don't think there's going to be problems still getting it in.
By the end of February, we'll have an answer, one way or the other?
Um, I think it will depend on how quick Olson can do the review. And I, and so, it'll go in February 16th as to how long it takes them to do the review off the inside.
How long was Wildcat Creek?
It took a little while.
I thought it was a while.
I mean, the, but, I don't know if this is as comprehensive as some of the ones we've done. We've had them before where somebody from Divisional Water Resources acting as FEMA's representative has come out and visited and decided to satisfy themselves that it is what we show it to be. But, and again, at the time we've done any of this stuff, it was a no doubt decision that they agreed with, so.
Okay, so the next step is for you to submit these plans to Olson?
To Divisional Water Resources, who will forward it on to Olson Associates.
Okay, and then on this February 16th, what happens? Decisions made at that time?
No, that's, we just have to have the appeal. And this is a thing that we've talked, the appeal, the, I don't think it's going to be as comprehensive as the one that we've done last time, but there are some criteria that they had to have for their appeal, and I mean, the notebook that we submitted for that was pretty thick. And so, it was, there's a lot of documentation that goes into this, but that's the next step, is we just have to have that, the appeal in by February 16th, and then they'll start their review. And I can't say when they would have that done, or when they would have answers. But, considering how Dane Bailey with Divisional Water Resources, and Chad with Olson, considering how we've been working with them through this whole thing, I would hope that it would go fairly quick, because this isn't going to be hitting us out of the wood.
Not to split hairs, but do we have to approve, if there's, if they fill out the approve, but do we still file it? Because we had to, I thought the city had to.
Actually, I mean, it will go through the city. You are, you are the applicant.
So if we have to prove it, I'm just starting to think, when we have to have it for a meeting so that we can approve it?
Well, this is, this starts it, I mean, any paperwork that'll need to be signed, we'll just come, we'll sign it.
Okay. Well, I just think your deadline was just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just a matter, we can.
I think Dane, if I understand, Dane is probably going to fill out the application, and we got to sign it. Is that correct? I think it's what he was going to do.
I don't, I don't, I mean, to me, it was just a matter of getting the papers filled out, but I don't think that.
I'm going to just fill them out, and then we'll sign it. Yeah, I don't think it's going to be difficult.
As the 90-day appeal process, or the 90-day appeal time started.
That's what we're in.
Yeah.
That ends February 16th.
Right, February. Yep. Any other questions for Brad before he gets out of here now? Okay. Thank you. Brad, good question. Okay, under Business and Discussions, Ordinance Number 1841, Appropriating Funds for Payroll for 2016.
Move to approve Ordinance 1841 for appropriating funds for payroll for 2016.
Second. I have a second. So, roll call, excuse me.
Beesinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echis?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Consent agenda, we have several things on that. Pay request for inline, pay request for CES group, certificate of completion, those are all three for the 11th Road Drainage Ditch, and then we have a deal for a convention of tourism.
Move to approve consent agenda. I got some questions.
Yeah. Ask them.
Number one, if we approve this for all, for all the 11th Road stuff, are they going to come back in the spring and then fix that?
Seeding, the seeding.
Their seeding, bring dirt back in?
Yeah, they're going to have to, they're going to have to fix, dress the ditch up. Yeah, Tony, it's a demo with it, that they would come back in the spring and fix the seeding and stuff. Because there's no way to, the seed's not going, it's not going to.
Right.
You just don't want to pay the fine on it if they're not coming back.
Exactly.
Don't want to sign off on it if we've got work to be done on it.
Sign the certification of completion. Because it's not complete. And we're about to pay the fine.
They've got to do, they've got to do their seeding.
And they're not going to do that till spring?
That's pretty common on those things, yeah.
Well, then we need to put a, if, if everybody's intent on approving this certification of completion, then we need to make an amendment to it, because everything is not done, and we signed off on this, we're saying it's done. Is there a way to make an amendment to this? Or do we just not sign off on the certificate of completion? Because that's what's in this, that's what's in the consent agenda. Should we pull item number three? What do you think, Rick?
No, I don't think so. You know, at some point, they said be level trust, plus they have a contract, and they have to come back. I mean, these, they carry a one-year deal, they're responsible.
They have a contract, but we're also signing off as.
What's not included here is Tony's email, but they were going to, they were to come back in the spring, and, because that ditch is going to get worn over the winter. They'll have to come back and dress it up so that they can get the seeding.
Yeah, because they got, it got washed out pretty good on that.
Yes, they're going to have to come back and dress it up and seed it, but they can't do that till spring.
No, I know that.
And that's part of their contract.
I agree with that, but I'm not for signing a certificate of completion on behalf of the citizens of Marysville when it's not done. We're signing off on this project, and it's not done. Can we not make an amendment or addendum to this, to this certification of completion? And can we, can we include the email in our, in our packet?
Yeah, probably should have, we probably should have copied that email on our.
Yeah, probably should have, we probably should have copied that email on there because what he'd said, that they were going to come back, it was basically, they're going to come back in the spring and seed it, dress it up.
So I understand the trust issue, and I'm totally for that, but legally, as we know, like, and I'm, I don't, what's the normal process? I'm sure we've faced this before.
Well, that's normal. I don't know that the certificate of completion being accepted, I think they're due the payment because they've done the work.
And we could book table them.
And I suppose you could table the certificate.
I amend my motion to withdraw number three of the certificate of completion. Second.
Consent agenda, item one, two, and four. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion with the addendum to remove item number three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Just going to leave that three out till next meeting?
I'll talk with Tony.
Doctor Tony.
Yeah, I'll talk with Tony soon.
Presentation of appropriation ordinance number 3617.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 3617.
Second. Second, motion to second. Roll call vote, please.
B-Singer?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Sorry.
Do we have any discussion?
No.
No, okay.
EKIS?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
From?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Staff reports, Rick.
First thing I have here is a service agreement with Agland. We have an annual service agreement with them. We have that now for a lot of years since we did that project. Carries the maintenance on our pumps, lift station pumps and the main pump station. New contract is attached for review and approval. Costs are the same as they were in 2015. And then I've also attached our latest maintenance report with the agreement. Probably in the next month or two, probably going to have a, a report or a quote for some impellers, the main pump station, so.
What about that one, on that one pump?
That's the one that'll be, that'll be for the impeller.
Okay.
I had expected it before now, but they just, they probably don't have costs on it. So recommend approving the contract, authorize the mayor to sign.
Move to approve the Agland service agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Have a motion second for the renewal of the contract with Agland on our sewer lift stations. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Second one is a sewer easement and maintenance agreement. And you want to talk about this one since you're the one that sent that to me? They're, they're the one that contacted you, weren't they?
Yeah.
Basically, Westar wants this sewer, and this is something they threw in at the last minute.
Well, they're, I don't know if they're just belting suspenders all the way or what. You know, when we vacated, we reserved an easement. All cities do that when they do a vacation, it's just a standard thing. And it essentially creates an easement that is just contained within that ordinance, standard terms. I mean, you can maintain it, of course, you're going to put things back in place if you have to go in there and dig. Westar wants it all in writing. I've never seen a city be asked to do that before, but we looked at it, Rick made some comments, he raised some issues, they changed some stuff in there with regards to the issues that Rick raised. And then I looked at it and I don't see any issues with it now. My view is, if that's what they really want, okay. I don't think it gives them any more rights than if we just said, you know, we've reserved this. So I'd recommend you approve it. And that should be the final step in getting this deal through that we've been working on, it seems like, for quite some time.
Is that the one that currently runs down the alleyway, or would be considered the alleyway at Wester property?
Yeah, because this took normal by surprise.
Yeah, I've just, I've never seen, but we're dealing with an extremely commercially sophisticated purchaser here who has a bank of lawyers. And so, they wanted this and there's no, I don't see any reason to not enter into it if that's what they'd like.
Discussion? When they proposed this, and we knew that easement was there, what they talked about in time using that spot for was possibly a new building. And I made the comment that this wasn't easement. And at that time, they said, well, we don't intend to build over the easement, that's why there was no discussion.
They never said anything about a new building.
No, they're not, no, they did. It's all storage.
It's all storage.
No building.
Pole building. They talked about maybe a pole building, but not a, not a.
But that's a building, isn't it?
They can't build on easements.
Okay, well, they're saying right here, in exchange for vacating the alley, they're asking now for it to be vacated, which means they can do whatever they want over that.
Vacated it already.
We vacated it.
But we kept the right of easement there.
Yes.
Because of the sewer line.
Yeah, so we are going to keep that.
Yes, they cannot build over it. They, they would build over, they can put a fence over it. And this basically says, if we go in there and do maintenance and we take the fence down to get in there, we got to put it back.
Well, we do that anyway.
Which is, which is kind of uncommon because generally, the, you know, the tenant or owner builds over easement to own risk, but by this one, it's a little different. You know, we, normally, just by the way we had it, if they put a fence, that'd be at risk. But with this one, this protects their fence, but they can't build a building on top of this. And if you notice, they're giving us an extra five feet on the other side. So instead of 20-foot easement, we have a 30-foot easement.
And the fence that they're building, unless they build a fence within their fence, the fence was to go around it and both entrances to their, inside the property there was right at the easement.
Yeah, I think that's probably what they're planning on. They, they have, they will have to submit a plan to the planning commission for what they're going to do.
Okay, and it has been our practice anyway, whenever our, we dig for sewer, or we dig for street, or we dig for anything on somebody's property, we put it back as close as possible. If, if we have to dig through cement, in time, we put the cement back.
That's what this says.
Yeah.
We have to do that.
So we do that anyway, so I don't, I don't have any objection to it.
I move that we approve the sewer easement and maintenance agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second.
Motion to second on that, that, in the sewer agreement. Motion second. Any more discussion on the subject? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Same sign.
And the third item is the construction inspection agreement with KDOT. This is a three-party agreement. Excuse me. CES has signed the agreement. I think you can see their signatures on there, this was scanned from theirs. And we are the second party to sign. The first 12 pages basically are the, well, other than the cover letter, the first 12 pages are new. Everything else, pretty much been, I think, reviewed because most of that stuff was connected with the agreement that CES signed. It's a lot of supplemental stuff. It basically supports all these different paragraphs in the agreement. Let's see, council approve and authorize mayor to sign.
Move to approve the KDOT construction inspection agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second. Motion to second for the KDOT inspections from CES. Have a motion to second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Pass. Debbie?
No, I don't think so. No, thank you.
Standing committees. Street?
Well, I had to tell you, all the guys were out for stone removal, but I believe it was all done today without any overtime. We were very fortunate, it didn't hit the weekend.
So? We didn't get as much as we were supposed to.
Right. A whole lot less than we were supposed to, so. Couple of them came in earlier, they took off at three and the other guys went home at five, so they covered, if it doesn't accumulate tonight, other than, I suppose it's possible somebody, one or two could get called out if it gets real slip overnight. It's all in the same budget, and if it doesn't accumulate tonight, we'll be okay.
Water and wastewater.
Yes, in front of you, there is a quotation from Howe Communications. Now, not proposing that this has to be done, I'm just presenting this for discussion. I discussed it with the mayor this afternoon, so as, you know, see what the council wants to do. As, if you've seen the tower at night, you can't see the shoulders and the head and the hat of the driver.
I think it looks kind of like a squid or something from a distance at night, it's so bad.
So, yeah, they, they did get the lights on, I think, the day after our last council meeting, and they came back the next night, adjust them to the full length that they can get them. So what's lit is all you can see. Because the rest, the top part is on the curvature of the bulb.
And I thought of what the term was for why, when lights don't align, it's called bad fill lighting. A second light is always a fill light, that they should, APEC should line up. My thought on this would be, we should talk to Mark at Olson and be like, you didn't design this correctly because it's not lit. The agreement says the design will be lit, it is partially lit. That is a design error. And see what they say. See if they will either cover it or work out something with us. That's what I think.
Considering Olson?
We do a lot of business with Olson.
I know, but considering Olson is the one that has the say over our floodplain, could we not ruffle anybody's feathers there until after that decision's made?
I agree with Vic.
I don't think they're that, but.
I don't care, I, I honestly, I think that that can wait.
I don't want to be beholden to them on it. Is this, is it a, is there a timeframe on this?
We can just ask. I mean, I think it's, we're not saying we're going to do anything, we just ask.
Well, I think we don't give a damn.
It's worth the question.
It says 30 days.
Well, that's a normal bid.
Can you ask Mark?
Yeah.
Well, I have to see, well, even if they, even if they split it.
I've known Mark for 25 years, so I'll, I'll talk with him, but I don't think we're going to have any success.
Just schmoozing a little.
Is the horse larger than the past horse?
Oh, yeah. About, about three or four times.
That's probably, that's part of it.
It is nine, let's see, it is a, I believe the horse is 19 feet 6 inches from the tail to the nose and roughly right at 15 feet from the bottom to the top of the brim.
And did they know that when we did the design? I'm just wondering if that was in.
They proposed that, that design, I mean, and they, I look back at the documents, it says lit. Well, it's not actually, it was partially lit.
Actually, oh, I've got compliments on it.
Well, no, I think, I think in the daylight, it looks good. And you know, actually, before it was lit, you'd be surprised how good it looked because it's so bright. The white water tower is so nice that it's more vibrant than the summer.
Compliments I've got have been the lights on it.
Really? I don't, I don't think it's worth a fight over.
No, I don't think it's worth a fight. I think you don't see what you don't have.
But I would even want to get their opinion if they designed the original lighting, at least get their opinion on what needs to be done.
This came today, could wait the next meeting. But I thought, you know, the thought was, you know, if you wanted to do it, it takes probably six to eight weeks to get the lights, they wouldn't be here to market it.
No, they take forever. They took forever to get these lights.
Yeah, three, four, five, almost six months.
Super special. But ask Mark, see what his thoughts are.
I think we should.
Tell him that some council members are disappointed because that's true.
Tell Olson him.
He can read the news and find out. But I'm definitely not suggesting it. I'm just, I just think it's worth the question.
And I'm not either. I'm just saying, that's the rationale. Why are you even asking? Well.
We should let him know and be quiet and send him a box of chocolates.
They're not going to be climbing up there until it warms up anymore.
No, nobody eyes, because they don't want it, no. But we, they, we're just about ready to submit the final payment question on that. But we've got it today, but it's not ready to present, final payment question.
So that, to get this, though, they just came out and looked at it and said, this is what we would suggest to, to finish up the light.
Well, Mark talked to them about whether or not they could put an extension on those arms now and get up there. And Al's response was no, that won't get up there because, because of the bulb. You'd have to get, reach it from the top down to see that portion since it goes over. And the only way to bend that light is with the prism and I don't think there's any way to do that, there, so.
I think $4,238 for a couple of lights is a little high. I do see this hazardous tower.
Well, the lights aren't that expensive, that's the labor.
Yeah, $2,300 for one hour.
$2,300 labor.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we pay it.
We don't pay for suckers, though.
At all. That's another thing.
It's not a necessity. No. It is more of, do you want the thing fully lit or not?
But, but, I'll put it, you know, on a, how much does this project cost as total?
Well, the, the.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Wait.
I told him like just this or when we did the planning?
Water tower.
Water tower.
400, 300, and?
386,000.
300 and?
389.
389.
389.
So that's 1%.
Right.
But that was for the water, for the people. This is just a picture of horses.
No, it was a tower.
It was all included in.
All I'm saying is, you don't go, you know, to pick up your new car at the dealership, you just dropped a mint on. And they're like, yeah, it's, we got a little ding in the fender there, but we figured, small potatoes. You'd be like, no, you fixed the fender. You know, that's my, my perspective is, that's.
I'm calling Michelle.
Ask Mark.
Only other thing I had under water and wastewater is, in case you didn't know, our water crew was at Christmas Eve. We had a water leak down over there. Christmas Day? Or Christmas Day?
Christmas Day.
Christmas evening, yeah, that day.
Christmas evening, yes.
Christmas evening, yes. They're out in the water leaks, so.
Did they need that new saw and they didn't have it?
No.
No, it was, it was a patch.
I wondered, okay.
It was a patch that, that came loose.
Well, they got corrected and fixed, but I thank them for me and how they seen them and so.
And I watched them pull out and it reminded me that, you know, those are the little things that you don't see, that we don't necessarily appreciate, that we're all at home and have our water running and, sort of running, and they're out there in the cold and it was pretty chilly back then, so.
Parks and Rec. Cemetery and Airport.
Cemetery and Airport. How are we coming along with Greer?
Debbie? We're not? No.
Okay. Have we sent him a letter? A demand letter? Does he know we're going to go to court?
Two letters.
He has, so we're ready to go to court?
Are you willing to go to court for $1,000?
We can do that ourselves.
Do we have a collection agency we work with? We could just send it to collections.
Small claims is up to $5,000.
I don't believe that municipalities are allowed in the small claims court.
Yeah, we'd have to take a hint.
So can we just send it to collections or do we have to go through?
Yeah, you have to go through.
Collections require a judgment.
Yeah, judgment.
Oh, that's right.
Where's this guy live? State's off.
State's off.
Outside town.
Outside town. I mean, the filing fee for a limited action isn't that much, but...
Sixty-five dollars.
If you were to litigate it, you'd end up paying the lawyer more than, that's the only issue now, if he didn't show up at the thing, and you got a default judgment, but it's really tough to, now, of course, there's the principle of the matter, and so, if you decide to authorize a suit, you certainly are within your rights, it's just, you know, the cost benefit issue is always a struggle.
We don't need an attorney, this is small claims court.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't believe a municipality can go to small claims court.
Really? Court of the people?
Right.
What other people?
Corporations, corporations aren't in there either, if I recall. You know, I'd have to look, I'm obviously not that familiar with small claims rules, because lawyers aren't allowed there, so you just tell people, so, but I, I think that, I'm not sure that a city can go to small claims court.
Well, I'll check with the court and find out.
And that would be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I didn't know lawyers weren't allowed. I mean, I've been to court a lot of times in Texas, and attorneys can be there, but you don't need them, they don't have to be, but they can be, and corporations definitely can support.
In Kansas, lawyers don't go into small claims court.
Okay, so...
Unless they're representing themselves, like Donna, some client didn't pay them, or that type of thing.
Okay, well, small claims, a judge would know this, right? So, we've got that right here.
Yeah, you could ask Judge Heckey what she thinks, yeah.
She's magistrate, so she'd be considered the small claims court?
Yes.
Okay.
She definitely...
Check, Debbie, or Rick could go to the small claims court.
Well, still, it'd be the same if you were in a city, so, we could make check, find into it, but...
And I tend to agree on the principle thing, you know, even if you break even, I don't wanna set a precedent of, well, so-and-so, something happened, and they didn't pay for it, and what if it's a big disaster and takes out the tower? I mean, oh, well, I'll be, you know, I mean...
Well, it's like the mayor had, the mayor said, when the meeting would first brought this up, we just got that runway repaired, and we had to go back and do it again, this is money out of our pocket, it's not like, oh, well, we were gonna repair that runway in a couple of months, we just did it, we didn't want to...
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, and it was...
And he should pay that, I mean, he caused the damage, nobody else did, but, but some people are like that.
Okay, well, first of all, we need to find out if, as a municipality, we can go to small claims court, I think that's where we should try it.
Yeah, but, you know, the other aspect, and you're sort of doing it tonight, is holding up to public ridicule.
I don't know this guy, does he respond to that?
Uh, let's see.
Well, let's, 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 let's go, let's do it, we can't just not do it.
He called me at home the first time, and I had to hang up on him, because I said, you can't call me at my house and talk to me like that.
And the second letter that was sent, he called and followed up, and the call was also disconnected.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't give him, just because he can, he wants to bully with the best of them, doesn't mean that we have to, not the lender, I think we should proceed.
Now, I'm, now I'm definitely with Todd on that one.
You're warm up to that.
I know, I was already there, but, yeah, if, if we're gonna take, we're gonna go that approach, there's one thing to ignore it, but when you...
Come back.
Yeah, and call people at home, and, yeah.
And you, you have a two-year statute of limitations, is what I would, so, you've got the time to do it, if you decide to go down that, but go ahead and visit with Judge Heckey.
Okay.
If anybody knows the parameters of small claims, it would be her, because she deals with it on a daily basis, and most attorneys, like myself, I don't deal with it at all, because it's not where I go.
I'll talk to her, Rick, you gonna talk to her?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Either me or Debbie, we'll get over it.
Okay.
Sometime.
If, if, have you done this before? Have you taken something to a court and represented?
I've been to court and testified.
Well, I've done this a lot.
But nothing like this, no.
I've done this a lot, if you want me to help, I'd be glad to go, to go to court with you.
Well, I think I can, I don't know.
Well, you just know what to say.
I can say, I don't, I don't know, we'll, we'll find out.
Okay. Okay.
Police and Fire. Administration Finance.
I had a question for the city attorney, you mentioned something about streamlining our procedure for nuisance violations. What, what would be our procedure to get something like that in place?
Well, one of the things I meant is, if you go through the code book, there's different types of violations, you've got the environmental code, you've got regular nuisance, there's several different ways, like that most recent house, you could have used at least three different things that are the code. All of them have a different method of getting the person's attention, and they all have different timelines, but they're all trying to accomplish the same thing. So, to me, you should be able to hit them with all the violations of the different codes with the same timeline, and with one letter, or one type of procedure. I mean, one of them requires the council to do certain things, and, so, it's just all over the board how it's approached, and that's what I mean, if you streamlined it so that you, you have different reasons for citing them, but they all have the same way of going after the person, so that eventually you could get to city court, instead of different methods to do that. So, that would be something to look at, is what happens is, you adopt different pieces of the code over time, and then they're never really matched up. So, it lessens your ability to enforce in an efficient manner, because you're like, well, we have to give ten days for this, but, oh, we have to give thirty for this, or those type of things, so, you could take a comprehensive approach, make some amendments, and then you can streamline that, so that, overall, I don't know that it'll go any faster, but it means that you can use all the tools in the toolbox at the same time, instead of, you know, it's almost like, you've got a socket wrench to fix it, but, but you need a monkey wrench, and you gotta wait a week for that. So, it could be a project that you put on your to-do list to have done. Not having a feel for how many, what I'll call nuisance violations you have, it's a question of, do you think it's worth it? I just know when I went through that, with the potential violation, I looked at the different code sections, and thought, what's the easiest way to do this? I just don't think it should have to be like that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Anything else under Administration Finance?
One thing, I, I have, did request a copy of the, the salary survey of Project Two, but I have had a chance to look at that, and will be, I think the next step would be to share something with the other members and the mayor, just, not, I don't have any conclusions now, but I did, and then Debbie sent me something again today, but the, so I'm gonna try to finish that up and make some sense of it, so...
Okay. Appointments and Wage Determinations. Todd Packet has a certified reserve officer at fifteen seventeen an hour.
I have a question, I looked up in the other, there are two other reserve officers currently, and one's paid twelve seventeen, and one's paid thirteen seventeen, and I'm wondering why the proposed is fifteen seventeen?
Todd Packet has probably more than a dozen years' experience as a reserve officer.
And he is?
He dropped off, and he's coming back.
I see.
So, he has.
That was the same wage you left out?
Requested by the chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to...
Move to approve Police Department Police Officer, one certified reserve, salary of fifteen dollars and seventeen cents per hour to Todd Packet.
Second. Okay, motion, second, approve Todd Packet's wage fifteen seventeen an hour, all those in favor? Aye. Close. Norbert?
Well, I think you already all know that this is my last meeting, I haven't been with you that long, and things happen, I had no idea in June that there would even be a position on the district bench available, but there was, and on December fourth, Governor Brownback called me and offered me that position, and I did accept the, the position, and will take the oath of office on January fourth at eleven at Holt. That means I can't practice law anymore, so you're gonna have to find a new city attorney. I think the mayor is working on that, I'd sent her some names, I think she's maybe even met with some potential attorneys, so hopefully she'll have something there. It's unfortunate that you've gone through three city attorneys in a year, but I guess that happens sometimes. Kind of curiously, John McNish may be getting some of my old jobs, I've left eleven cities without a city attorney, and so, I know John's met with some of the cities that I've also been leaving, so, that's kind of where we are. I guess it was short, as I joked with Rick and Debbie, that I didn't have enough time to really screw things up, so, as far as things are going on, you know, you can ask, we, we don't know anything about that open records, open meetings thing, but the guy said it could be six months, so heavens knows when we, you might hear something about Just keep an eye on that, but it's, I've enjoyed helping you out the last few months, but I hope to really enjoy being a district judge. The other thing is, well, I guess that's right after anyway, then we want to have an executive session, we should, we talked about fifteen minutes is what...
Fifteen minutes is not property acquisition.
So, if you consider a motion to go an executive session for fifteen minutes, to consider possible acquisition of real estate, we can discuss, Rick can discuss that with us in some detail, and then you can move on to the rest of your meeting.
Move, we go into executive session to discuss property acquisition, after a two-minute break, beginning at eight twenty-two, returning at eight thirty-seven.
To include...
To include the city administrator and city attorney.
Second.
All those in favor?
The river was the county line.
On the park, owner of one of those...
We didn't agree to do this, did we?
It's a thousand dollar bill.
And we're not paying taxes.
We didn't continue, but we just didn't like...
There's a lot of that.
Yeah.
Those, some of those lots have been in the Riley County, several multiple times.
We didn't pay, but we just put it on various parts of...
It's a little creepy, cold, it is cold in there. Okay, I just bought it for me.
Within a minute. Within a minute? Okay.
Eight thirty-seven, two thirty-seven.
There you go. All right. America, I'll let you brief some.
Well, we did have an executive session about possible acquisition of real estate, the reason we do that is, if you're going to be trying to buy some real estate, you don't want people to know what you might be willing to pay. So, that's the reason we had it, we've discussed it with the administrator, and, and he understands how he can act on our behalf if necessary, so, I suppose that's about all I can say about it.
Roundtable. Bill?
Between, on Ninth Street, between Alston and Calhoun, there's, somebody's moved in there, and they, they've really started a junkyard of lawnmowers.
On the east side?
On the inside, on the outside, around the house.
On the east side of the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know where I'm talking?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. There must be thirty lawnmowers up there, sitting up.
About right.
Yeah.
We'll talk, we'll talk, David, I know what you're talking about.
So, you're saying you really like it?
No.
You need, you need yours repaired or something?
No, I, I think they ought to move on down a little. No, it, it's, it really, it's looking bad.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
That's it.
Darlene?
Well, I wanna thank all the many people in town who put up Christmas lights and decorated, and I think it looks beautiful, I drove through Seneca, coming back from Topeka, a week or so ago, and Seneca's downtown, hardly any lights, you know, our downtown stores have a lot, put up a lot of lights, and I didn't really notice that many houses. I am asking Ward Two citizens to go out and take advantage of all the Christmas light sales that are on now, and so we can put on a better show next, next year in Ward Two.
Brad?
Two quick things, I wanna thank our, our departing city attorney, I was, never had the opportunity before, and I think you provided some really sound advice, and I appreciate everything that you did for us. The other thing, we had a speaker at the beginning of the meeting that commented that the elderly don't know what's going on at city councils, so I guess I just wanna remind everybody that we, we, they're on Blue Valley, we now have them on the website, so, I will say that, you know, really, nobody has an excuse for not knowing what's going on, or, you know, it's, it's, it's available, so, that's all I have.
To that point, to my experience, a lot of the older residents know a lot more what's going on than the younger folks do, I'm always explaining projects to younger people, but older people are asking me questions, it's great, which is, which is awesome, I'm glad they're watching and paying attention. The only thing I had for roundtable was, I've had two people ask me now, and I don't know if anybody here on council would know the answer or not, but, that there might be a discussion of moving trash service out of alleys on the streets, and they've asked me if this come to the city council, and I said, I have heard exactly nothing about it, is that a thing, or are people just, I mean, is this like a discussion going on in town that...
Certain areas.
I don't know anything about it. Do you know anything about it, by chance?
Just certain, just certain areas.
Oh, okay. Well, that, I didn't think it, it's something that'd ever come up in front of us, or at least not that I noticed, maybe some years ago, that was a discussion?
For one.
It's not our purview?
Because we do, we do not have a franchise ordinance. For that, we don't regulate it, so, we can't tell, to my knowledge, because we don't have a franchise ordinance, anybody can provide trash service at any spot in the city where they want to, we're one of the very few cities in Kansas that does not have a franchise ordinance to cover waste pickup. Every city I've worked in, we had a franchise.
In simple terms, what's the benefit, you know, detriment to having a franchise ordinance?
Well, you know, a lot of cities do that, where they work with one contractor, they put it up for bid, or request for proposal, maybe work in some additional recycling services, you'll see in some cities, they'll all have those totes, so you end up with a uniform thing at the curb. Then, the other advantage is, so you've only got one trash truck tearing up the street, rather than, this company picks up two houses, this picks, you, you can reduce the amount of wheels on the ground of trash trucks, if you're down to one purveyor, if you will. So, those can be, and then you can build into that agreement, whatever, some things like, you're gonna have totes, and you're gonna pick up in the alley, or whatever.
And you could designate hours of service, and things like that?
Yeah, you could say that they're, sure, you can negotiate all that when you have something like that, and then hopefully, the other hope is, that if you offer the whole city up, that you might be able to get what people are paying down, because the contractor would look at, you know, waste management would come in and bid the whole city for sure, and then you could look at that and say, hey, if we could, what's the average trash rate in Marysville? With this contract, can we get it down, and theoretically help our citizens up with a lower price, tear up your streets less, and maybe have a little bit more uniform approach to it, and that way, if there's a problem, you call one person at the company and say, hey, they didn't pick up, or they did this.
And franchise ordinance aren't mayor broad for all services, you have a franchise ordinance specifically for trash, franchise ordinance specifically for, I mean, we do have franchise, other franchises in town.
That's the only utility we don't have.
Only utility, the only one?
You treat it as a utility, franchise. My experience has been one, at least one city, the city owned it, another city has been where, it was franchised out, but the city did the billing for the contract, and collected a dollar, dollar and a half out of each bill, and that money went into a special fund that paid for buying all the computers, so, there was always money there to buy, so the city never really had to pay for the computers, because they collected a buck off every bill of the month, and that, that went into a computer fund, and that's how you got your computers and paid for the billing and all those, but, you know, it was like a buck or two, and save the contractor having to send the money out.
Am I imagining things, did, was this discussed with the local trash service once upon a time, like four or five years ago?
Very, very...
Very informally and nothing...
They weren't interested in...
Uh, no, it just never went any further.
Okay. Because I think the discussion, and this, I think, was right when they got on council, was that maybe it would be mutually beneficial, but it never went anywhere.
But never went anywhere.
Okay.
Another thing you can do with that billing, like Rick said, and that's not uncommon where the city bills, so now the residents getting a bill for sewer water trash, it cuts down on the collection that the trash people have, because if they don't pay, it's like a utility bill, and so often the trash service will lower their monthly price because they're not having to do the collection end of it.
And they get paid. But, yeah, under that scenario... Under that scenario, the contractor gets a check for everybody that pick up trash. The city then has a... If somebody doesn't pay, the city, it goes up, which works okay, but it's still, you know, you treat them like a sit-down. But, you know, it worked... In that instance, that worked good for the contractor.
And I'm not suggesting we make changes. I mean, if it's not broken, don't fix it. I was just kind of curious on how that shook out, so... That's all I have.
Thank you. When we were talking about the... Everybody in town could get access to the website for council meetings, so they can hear exactly what goes on without anybody's twist or, you know, the way they want to put the news out. I think we should let them know the website is citiofmarysvilleks.com, and you'll come to the webpage, and it'll say city council, and I think it says... Does it say streaming video, or does it say city council meeting, Deb?
Yeah.
Council meetings. And that you can get that any time of day. If you don't have a computer, you can go to the library and use one of their nine computers.
And they won't be on until the Mondays following, because it takes six to eight hours just to upload that video, I guess, and we have to do it after hours.
Okay.
It just... It takes so much... We have only so much bandwidth. It takes so much up, it just slows everything down, so the upload is being done after hours, and I believe Scott said, former mayor, that on Mondays...
If we can get it toward the end of the week, that's...
If we can get it toward the end of the week, yes, but by Monday, by following Monday, it will be on there if sooner than possible, but you can't take that card tomorrow and upload it during the day. It has to be done after hours.
Okay. Then I was also brought to my attention that some council members, even with our new speakers, still cannot be heard, because they're either talking down into the desk, or they're not speaking, or they lean back in their chairs, but some can be heard and some still cannot. So just want to make everybody aware that that's a problem still. And I've been asked when the lights... The lights judging would be done and when the news would go out. So today was the last day, I think, that you could be... Put your name in.
Yesterday was.
Yesterday was? Okay, so you can't be in there anymore if you're not already entered, and you can't vote anymore if you haven't already voted. So does anybody know when it's announced?
I don't know, but Wayne was in this afternoon and picked up the balance.
Okay.
About thirty or more balance.
Good, so soon it will be announced.
It might be, because there wasn't... I think there was some confusion exactly how those were going to be counted, so I think it might be for the first year. It might be... Might be a week or so. I don't know, but I wouldn't expect one tomorrow.
Okay.
But I think they'll try to get out there as quickly as possible, so...
Brad says not to expect it tomorrow. So, and I would like to thank Norbert so much. I've learned a lot from him, as he's been our city attorney, I think, because he has been selected to now be a judge, and especially by the governor, or excuse me, yeah, the governor, and I'd just like to say, sorry to see you go, but so happy for you and the accomplishment that this speaks of. Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
And if the judge thing doesn't work out, come on back.
Dennis?
I don't have any.
I have nothing.